Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. This is the regularly scheduled city council meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. And the first thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
And will you do a roll call?
Barbara White.
Present.
Dave Gray.
Present.
Chad Glassell.
Present.
Andy O'Barry.
Here.
Dave Yen-Gree.
Present.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda, including additions or deletions?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to suggest an addition for an executive session to follow all the other agenda items but before adjournment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next thing on our meeting is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. So if you are here to talk to us, address us about something not on the agenda, this would be the opportunity. Before I read all the legal language, let me just see, is there anyone here to make comment to council for something not on the agenda? Okay, so given that I see a few hands, give me one second to read this and then we'll go on to that. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. We usually are able to follow up and get you more information, get you an answer to your question. We just don't do it in the meeting because it's not an agenda item. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. So, that being said, I saw a few hands. Do you want to come up and address council? Please state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind. And I think our new system will show a time once you begin.
All right. Aloha. My name is Janet Chapman. I live at 60711 Oak Grove Road, Montrose, 81403. And I am delighted with the renovation of your council chambers in this historic building. It worked out well. And it's a historic building and it has geothermal. I'm also speaking for Citizens Climate Lobby, because there's an item on the agenda, which I am glad to see, but I'm not supposed to talk about agenda items. But I am going to ask a proposal for the new city hall building, which is the renovation of the Wells Fargo Building, that they would consider now that they're on the top stage to consider getting a bid for solar for that. Because you're really setting the pace and being a role model for renewables. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then I think I saw your hand as well, so come forward. Please state your name and address for the record, and then tell us what's on your mind.
Hello, my name is Gary Doll, and I live on 3241 Ivy Drive. And we were going to address a development to the east of my property that Synergy was interested in purchasing or moving forward. I was here a couple of weeks ago where we discussed the zoning for R2 or B1. This room would not have been able to hold everybody that would have showed up if they hadn't been canceled out on this meeting. My concern is, with about the exception, in my knowledge, of about three families in our subdivision, which has numerous houses. We're all senior citizens. And so, in my cul-de-sac, if that was to be opened up, I have a piece of paper from one of the developers who made a statement that Yarrow Way, Hollow Way, and mine could potentially be opened up to cul-de-sacs. And if you do any research at all, that lowers my price of my home by 10 to 20 percent. That's how valuable cul-de-sacs are. There's five homes on each side, so let's just be friendly about it, say they're worth all $500,000. I'm pretty sure we generate a little bit of tax revenue. So, there's half a million dollars lost by opening up that street. But if you go down into Ivy Drive, where I live at, and you look towards 6700, you can't see 6700 because of the little bends in the road going down there towards it. And there's only sidewalks on one side of the street. So, can you guess on a morning where maybe you're going to have a doctor's appointment, go for a walk, where you have to cross the street or back your car out, and you have a new main thoroughfare coming down through there? I think that's a serious situation. And if it wasn't for those three, four families, which are great families, I'm pretty sure AARP would really be interested in knowing how seniors are being treated, especially in this development. But I ask you all, if you get a chance, or maybe some of you live over there, 7, 8 o'clock in the morning, where do people walk? Not really on the streets, or on the sidewalks, they walk down the streets. And they all enjoy each other's company. That's what makes Montrose great. And the other thing about it is, even if you were to develop it, which is going to happen sometime, I'm not denying it, but on the other side of my fence to this new development, there's already a sewer top to it, so there's no need. In my contract--
Mr. Doll, I'm going to stop you there. That's--
Oh, I'm sorry.
--three minutes, but we appreciate your comments, and thank you very much.
Yep, no problem. Take care.
Yep, come on up.
Hi, my name is Donald Cram, C-R-A-M, and I live at 14461 Marine Road, in the county, not in the city. And I want to speak to support the installation of solar on the Wells Fargo Building that Janet Chapman was mentioning. And I'd like to just comment that there's clearly interest and participation on the part of Montrose residents in interest in taking action that does address climate change. And I'm speaking of the clear support for the recycling program that's been in place for a long time, even though there's some doubt about how beneficial-- I would say there's some doubt about how beneficial that is with respect to climate change. And I comment that it would make sense for the city to have a climate change plan, as do various other Western Slope counties, including URA County and San Miguel County and various cities. I would think a climate change plan for the city should identify opportunities for the city to make a difference, to take investments that would put some weight on financial impacts and some weight on greenhouse gas equivalent impacts, and provide a prioritized list that the city should be acting upon. And frankly, I don't know if putting solar panels on top of that building would be the very best use of money to take some action. But it's clearly, it will be a very public place, and it would be very symbolic and good if the city would take action on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Great. And because sometimes we do have staff that can respond or help you with your comment, maybe they have more information for you, please do sign in when you come into meetings, because otherwise, it could be hard. We did have your name, but sometimes it can be hard to find you if we want to give you some more information. So make sure you sign in or sign out when you leave if you didn't sign in. Okay. Don't see any more public comments, so we'll keep going. The next thing on our agenda tonight is approval of the minutes from the April 18th, 2023 regular city council meeting. Did anyone see anything that needed to be changed? And if not, would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2023 regular city council meeting as presented.
Great, we've got a first and a second, and we are going to try our electronic voting system again. Remember, you need to vote and then hit save. Look at that, it works, and our minutes are passed unanimously. Yeah, fantastic. Let's go on to item seven, which is Ordinance 2621. This is the second reading of this ordinance. This is consideration of an ordinance authorizing the loaning of money in conjunction with the sale of real property addressed at 433 South First Street, Montrose, Colorado pursuant to Article II, Section 5 of the Charter of the City of Montrose. And I will ask Assistant Attorney Chris Dowsey to give us more information.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This is the second reading of the ordinance, and nothing has changed from the first. But what this does is authorizes the loaning of money in conjunction with the sale of the historic city hall building, as well as appropriates the funds, or the beginning of the Montrose Permanent Fund with CMU. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great.
Chris, may I prompt you with a question?
Yes, of course.
Is this contingent upon anything?
Yes, so the monies that are allocated to the CMU, or the Montrose Permanent Fund through CMU Foundation, is contingent upon the sale of City Hall.
Great. That makes sense. Anyone else, any other questions on this item? This is the second time we're seeing them, as required by ordinance. We always hear them twice, and it takes two affirmative votes to pass. Seeing none, would accept a motion. Oh, wait, thank you. My past mayor has reminded me to ask for public comment. Someone out there probably would have waved me down, too. Any public comment on this item? Okay, thank you. We do allow public comment on every single item, and then some items require a hearing, and that's why you'll see sometimes on the agenda it says hearing, but otherwise, we have public comment.
I therefore move to adopt Ordinance 2621 on second reading as presented.
I'll second.
Great, we have a first and a second. Please vote. And that passes four to one. Thank you very much. Okay, next item is item eight, Ordinance 2622. This is also the second reading of this ordinance. This is council consideration of an ordinance granting and authorizing the conveyance of an interest in city-owned real estate pursuant to Section 1-9-2 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. This is for the Third Street Right of Way, and I'll ask City Engineer Scott Murphy and Planning Manager Jase Hawkewell and City Attorney Ben Morris to tell us more, remind us about this item, and especially the public listening.
I can go first. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, no changes since the last reading. This is, was discussed previously concurrent with the contract award for the South Third Plaza. So, the plaza that's being built there on South Third is a continuation of the CMU campus up to Cascade Hall. The portions within the plaza itself would be vacated with vacations. Each go half to the adjoining owners, which on the north side is the library, on the south side is CMU. And then the library has expressed that they would then deed their half over to CMU so that the plaza is in contiguous ownership with CMU, which matches the existing plaza between the Branscombe Building and the library. Because there's utilities within there, we are reserving a utility easement, and happy to answer any questions. And I guess if Jase or Ben wanted to add anything additional on that one?
Nothing to add here.
Okay, so tonight, I know we're voting on-- we're not voting on the project, we're voting on the conveying that property. But I just want to kind of go back and use this opportunity to talk about the project for a second. The bids received were over our allotted budget, and you trimmed them down, and the project is currently within budget.
Correct. Yep, yep, so that product was awarded last council meeting down at the budget amount, which is a partnership between the city and CMU. So, the city's paying $500,000, which would have, covers what we would have done for kind of the street improvements in that area anyway. There's some addition, our new additions of parking, redoing of a parking lot, fixing sidewalks, drainage, a lot of those areas. And then the plaza itself equates to about $200,000, and that's what CMU is paying for, for the portions that they'll own. So, another great partnership between the two.
Great.
And if I understand correctly, those items that you trimmed in order to come within budget are items that we can add in the future and that will not require destroying any of what we're doing now in order to install that infrastructure, right?
Certainly, yep, 100 percent. So, with those, you know, any concrete that's going in, get sleeves underneath, all the areas to receive landscaping can independently be worked on without damaging any of the others or having to dig out or take out anything new. We are also adding conduit to allow for, we're going to pursue a grant for EV charging on South Third Street as well. The best location with all the equipment, it's looking like it's going to be on the north side of the street, which is great, gets you right next to the plaza, right next to the library, and then it's the, they're the larger parking spaces, so it just makes it a little roomier for EV charging without taking up any of the prime parking right next to Cascade Hall. So, we're very excited about that, and it lends itself well, should hopefully be a slam dunk on the grant side in the future.
That's great. So, us conveying property, to bring us back to tonight's agenda item, us conveying this property to CMU doesn't prohibit us from continuing to work with them on adding and using money in the future to make this plaza more exciting?
Nope, so I think any future projects, if we were to partner, be as kind of a similar partnership, they would probably take the lead as the landowner, or the majority landowner on this project, so we're taking the lead on this one since it's primarily a streets project. But I think if there were to be more in the future, either they would do them just as a, you know, kind of chip away at it from a landscaping standpoint, or a larger partnership that would be budgeted for and done collaboratively.
So what we're voting on tonight means they'll really own the plaza part of this land?
Correct, yep, yep. From the curb lines inward, so anything kind of street-related remains under the city's ownership.
Okay. Anything else? Then I would accept public comment on this item. Seeing none, a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2622 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Moving us on to item nine, which is Ordinance 2623. This is also a second reading, and this is consideration of an ordinance for the annexation of Sunset Village additions. And so, I will ask Planning Manager Jase Hawkewell to introduce this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I promise I'm not going to have too many problems here. Here we go.
And are you going to present the annexation and the zoning in all-in-one presentation?
It'll be a single presentation for item nine and 10.
Perfect.
And Bree, if you could just have the Zoom, I'll just share it through Zoom.
And then we'll accept public comment on both portions of it, because there are two separate votes, one for the annexation and a separate one for the zoning.
Okay, thank you. As usual, I feel like I'm always the one that has something that comes up here. But the item I have in front of you tonight is the second reading of an annexation and initial zoning request that was heard two weeks ago. This is a request by the Cook Family Trust for two parcels located at 576 and 6166600 Road. The owner's planning to develop the land here in the near future, and the annexation's going to be required for that development. So, again, this is going to cover item nine and 10 that are on the agenda, both that annexation and initial zoning requests. Shown on the screen here is the annexation schedule. It should show full screen, but that's, I think we're fine here. As you can see, just per state statute, we have kind of a fairly lengthy timeline for annexations, that's just how these work. You all have seen them a handful of times, but that said, we are at the tail end of this one, so this is just wrapping up in the second reading here tonight. So just for some site-specific details, what we're looking at is about a 10-- not sure why things aren't flipping here. They're flipping on my screen, I promise.
See, that's what happened, you jinxed yourself by promising to have no technical difficulties.
It'll catch up, there we go.
I do that, I'm sorry.
We're with you now.
Okay, yeah, for whatever reason, it looks different on mine. But that said, what we're looking at is 10 acres, or just over 10 acres within the city's UGA. It's also within the city's sewer service area and Tri-County's water service area. This slide shows just the zoning that we're looking at adjacent to the property. As you can see, this is surrounded by a lot of county, unincorporated county property, as well as some city property. It's actually adjacent to the north of the recently annexed Hilltop North addition that was done about four months ago or so, and that's the R4 property directly to the south. The request tonight is initial zoning of R3A. That refers to medium-high-density districts, which is really intended to provide kind of a mixed density, can have single-family homes, duplexes, multifamily residents. There we go. So, this is the growth area map from our comprehensive plan. This site sits in Growth Area 2, which refers to the fact that it has moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. What that means is, generally speaking, it's, there might be some sewer or water extensions that are necessary. That being said, this has got a sewer main on the southern border of the property, so it actually has very good infrastructure already in place. Here, we're looking at the comprehensive plan, specifically the future land use map. What we're looking at is residential mixed-density medium as the designation here. That really accommodates kind of your medium to kind of lower high-density threshold, so that R3A is supported by the future land use map. One thing I did want to mention as well is some of the comp plan goals here. So, we have found, staff has found that it meets a number of the goals, I'm not going to read them verbatim here off the slide, but it does manage growth in a sufficient way, given the infrastructure proximity. It does promote infill on underutilized sites or redevelopment of underutilized sites, and it does provide for housing variety. Shown here is just the bulk standards for the R3A zone districts. Nothing really to note here. When a development does come in, this is, these are the standards that it will have to meet. That being said, there's no formal development that has been submitted to the city to date. And then just to conclude, the area surrounding the subject site is urbanizing, as you can kind of see with the recent annexations. It's also more than 1/6 contiguous to city limits, that's a state statute requirement. An annexation agreement's already in place, as well as an annexation impact report. Those have already been completed. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, city annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission did recommend approval for that R3A zone district request, just wanted to make note of that at their Planning Commission meeting about a month ago. So, in conclusion, staff does recommend the annexation of the property, as well as that zoning designation of R3A. So, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and the property owners also here, if you have any questions for them.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions from council? Okay, then we'll take the first item, which is the second reading of the ordinance that would annex the property, and I'll ask if there's any public comment on the annexation portion. Seeing none, would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2623 on second reading as presented. I'll second that.
Please vote. It passes unanimously? Okay, great, that passes unanimously. So we'll move on to the second part, which is Ordinance 2624 on second reading, and this is the annexation portion, and this is for annexing the Sunset Village addition as an R3A medium-high-density district. Is there any public comment for this portion? Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2624 on second reading as presented.
Second.
We've got a first and a second, so please vote electronically. Look, we're back to working, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move on to item 11, which is a first reading, and this is Ordinance 2625. This is council's consideration of Ordinance 2625, clarifying Article 1, Section 7 of the Charter of the City of Montrose regarding qualifications for candidates to the office of the City of Montrose Counselor. And I will ask Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliaro to tell us more about this.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm hearing a proposal to add a use footnote to a section to the city charter. This ordinance is brought under Article 10, Section 3, wherein the city reserves the right to clarify charter provisions via city ordinance if deemed necessary for the efficient administration of the city government. The proposal appears on pages 27 through 29 of tonight's session packet. The language we're talking about adding appears on page 28 under Section 1 in bold. This was discussed at a work session on April 17th of 2023. There's no changes that were made to the proposal since the presentation of that work session. This adds a canon to construction. I'll define in general what that means. In general, those are interpretive tools. That's the simplest definition that can be offered to them. Those are used by courts to divine meaning from language, whether it be in a court rule, a statute, or constitutional provision, or in this case, a Home Rule Charter provision, in order to apply that language to a given set of facts. There are a lot of different canons of construction used in statutory constitutional interpretation by the courts. Some are codified in statute, in Title 2 of our Colorado revised statutes, some come from case law. This particular one that's in the proposal in front of you is called the Canon of Constitutional Avoidance. What that means is that statutory terms should be construed in a manner that avoids constitutional infirmities. Thus, if a statute is capable of alternative constructions, one of which is constitutional, then the constitutional interpretation is to be adopted by the court. In other words, it's to adopt a provision that's in harmony with the constitutional provisions of the state constitution. In general, this canon is only able to be used when a court first finds ambiguity in the language that it's dealing with. That is, when the words used are either unclear in their usage or capable of two or more plausible constructions. This proposal would, if adopted, encourage a reviewing court of competent jurisdiction taking a look at this language in our charter, to use the canon in order to interpret the language for harmony with the Colorado State Constitution, without first making that predicate finding of ambiguity. That is its function. Staff would assert that this is necessary for the efficient administration of the city government. As discussed in the work session, this is a procedural clarification to our law, to our charter. It's a use note, it's not an addition of substantive law. Substantive law additions to charter require the process by amendment to the charter under Article 10, Section 2, another provision, and we're not dealing with those, we're dealing with procedural, a procedural rule and way. So, this by contrast adds an interpretive footnote affecting procedure only, so it may be brought by ordinance to you tonight. And that's it before you. I can take any questions at this time. I can take any questions at this time.
So for quick clarification, this is not in any way changing or altering our charter. It is merely adding a footnote.
Correct.
It says, "If this is confusing, the state constitution takes precedence." Well, I may have oversimplified it.
It is the, this provision is to be construed in harmony with the state constitution, to be constitutional.
Any other questions? Okay. Then I will hold a hearing on this. That means this is the chance for public comment on this particular item. Does anyone have any comments? I don't see any, so I would accept a motion from a fellow councillor. Oh, close the hearing. You do, unlike public comment. Hearing needs an open and close. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2625 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thanks. We have a first and a second. Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Okay.
Put down the request down there. I don't believe in amending the charter by city ordinance. And it is allowed under the law. But in this case, I have, after consultation with the city attorney, I'm compelled to say that it's something that's necessary, just so that the council knows that I am in support. But I just, the idea of changing the city charter.
We aren't changing the city charter.
Well, we're adding to it.
We're adding to it.
It'll be in the city charter. So anyway, just to make my position clear, I believe that this is quite necessary, this comp, to make this.
You believe your vote is necessary? I just want to, just for clarification, you believe it is necessary to add the footnote?
Yes.
But you're going to vote no?
No, I'm going to vote, I'm supportive. The idea is that I'm in support of necessarily changing the charter by city ordinance, which is allowed. Don't get me wrong, it is allowed. And normally, if this was something else, I would be opposed to it. But I just, I think there needs to be clarified here. We cannot amend the charter without a vote in the constitution. This is a. Well, if I'm not mistaken, under the city charter, you can, if it's necessary to.
I'm going to stop you both there. I think this is exactly why we have a city attorney that sits on our dais and can chime in. When council is debating what we are and aren't legally allowed to do. So I'm going to ask our city attorney to chime in.
Okay. I don't want to split hairs with this. We cannot change the charter itself by ordinance. As Mr. Reed stated, that supplement has to go through the voting people. We can clarify the charter by ordinance. The charter itself allows that. And that's what we're attempting to do here, to clarify or route a court to interpretation of the charter using this particular canon of interpretation. We're not changing the charter's substance or the language in it, because we're not allowed to do that by ordinance. I hope that helps you guys.
It does. It's just my understanding that my interpretation was just a little bit different than how I read.
Okay. So I am going to, I think I opened the hearing, but I'm going to remind. No, actually, I opened, I closed. We have a motion, and we have a second. We had some further discussion.
Second motion is void.
Absolutely. That being said, now I would ask you to please vote. Oh, I saw it quickly. It passed by zero unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Item number 12 tonight is ordinance 2626, first reading. This is our consideration of an ordinance amending the Montrose Municipal Code by repealing provisions related to the planning commission and land development, repealing certain chapters of the Montrose Regulations Manual relating to land development, and adopting a new Title 11 Land Development Regulations for the city. Boy, that makes it sound really simple, but I know this has been a ton of work. So I will turn it over to Planning Manager Jase Hoppe to tell us about this item.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an exciting time for, I think, planning staff in the city and a lot of us involved in this project. Bree, could you flip it to the Zoom? Should be sharing. I'm not going to make any promises on technical difficulties on this one. Sorry. Perfect. Yeah, so this has really been a heavy lift by city staff, by the consultant team, by a lot of folks. We've had stakeholders involved in this. We have, so right now, we do have a Zoom link, and we do have our consultant team, or at least part of our consultant team, on the phone. I'm actually going to just check. Martin, are you able to hear us okay? Martin?
Yes, I am, Jase. Thank you.
That's phenomenal. Glad to hear. I believe Jerry Dahl had another appointment. He might be chiming in here shortly. He's also, he should be available for the second reading of this item. So it's good to keep that in mind. But yeah, Martin Landers and Jerry Dahl have been a big part of this, this code adoption and what we're going to see tonight. So I'll go over the presentation. We spent about an hour on this at work session a month ago. We had a public open house two weeks ago that we spent about an hour with some stakeholders on. I will say it was fairly lightly attended. So I will go kind of over the higher-level stuff, but we're happy to answer some of the questions as we go. So just to go over a little bit of the project schedule for everyone here, this actually started before I started here at the city. The code review and diagnosis started back in spring of 2022, so just over a year ago, actually. And in late summer, it was really determined that the best approach would be to separate this code adoption process into phases. Phase 1 is really what you see tonight. And what that is, is a consolidation of our current land use, really into one unified area. So I'll go over kind of some of the objectives on the next slide. But as you can see, we're really at the bottom of this chart here, this slide. We're close to the finish line. We're at the first reading, and we'll have second reading in two weeks, followed by adoption, assuming, or with council's approval, of course. So. As far as the project objectives go, like I said, it was determined that the best way to go about this was kind of a multi-phase approach. As mentioned, our current code is just a patchwork as it relates to land use, dispersed through multiple locations within the municipal code, within our regulations manual. And we really felt it best to consolidate all those sections into one simple unified chapter, one place where everyone could find everything, and we wouldn't be bouncing around from chapter to chapter. We could easily help residents out when they call or are looking for information. And it would help developers out that are looking exactly at what the requirements are. In short, our code right now is a little bit archaic. And I think we're bringing it up to, bringing it up to speed and modernizing it, which is, which is really exciting for a nerdy planner like myself here. But in addition, we wanted to eliminate some redundancies that existed and some things that just added confusion to our current code. When there's multiple sections, you've got redundancy that exists. And sometimes you have just confusion that adds on, some things that just, that don't add up, don't make sense. And so we've tried to fix those with this consolidation process. And then lastly, there was some updates we did that are more substantial in nature, not really major when it comes to zoning or other components like that, more legal in nature. We covered a lot of these at the work session. A lot are outlined specifically in the staff report and that Attachment A to the staff report, which goes over the more substantial changes. But that was one of the goals here with this phase 1 as well. So here, you can just see it. What we, what we just put all into one here. We've got multiple sections. We've got the entirety of Title 2. We've got multiple chapters within Title 4 that we consolidated, and then multiple sections within there. In addition, we have what's called the Montrose Regulations Manual. That's technically not our municipal code. But there was a lot of portions regarding land use that we, that we have to look at and we go by. So portions that were pulled in and, again, all consolidated into this new Title 11 that should be very user-friendly moving forward. And again, the attachments are actually within the staff report. So there's a clean version, and then there's a redlined version. Again, we went over these at work sessions, so I won't get into too much detail. But those are available to the public. They're also on a public website. Here, we've got the table of contents for what's proposed for Title 11. Basically, just including 15 chapters in total. So I'm not going to go through these. But as you can see, it has a structure to it, where we didn't really have one before. So looking at some kind of usability enhancements, modernization, I'll cover a few of these. And then, again, we can, we can kind of finish and open up for questions. But this represents the review procedures chart. This is a great visualization for staff, for applicants, for council, to see exactly the process each application type goes through. We didn't have anything like this before. We, or I should say, we currently don't really have anything like this, certainly not structured in this fashion. So just, I'll just give an example, just so you kind of see how it works. If you, if you can see the very top line, that's the site development plan. What you see there is the X refers to action required or something, it basically needs to go through that process. So a site development plan would go through a pre-application process. It'd go through a completeness review, which is that CR. That's what that refers to. It would go through a referral. So that would basically means it's referred to other agencies, utility companies, CDOT, all people or entities that would apply to a specific site development. And then, at the end, it's just an administrative decision. That's what that AD stands for within the approval column. And it is, it is basically approved by staff after it meets all of the specific code requirements. Now, looking at maybe a separate one that, let's say, the city council is more involved with.
Could you do an annexation? Because we did that tonight.
Sure.
And that might make a good example, because it'll tie in with what we already talked about.
Annexation's great, and a site-specific zoning's a good one, too. So with an annexation, it goes, again, through the pre-application process. So it's basically vetted by staff. We sit down with the applicant team, go over the requirements. It goes through the completeness review. So basically, they have to submit all the appropriate documentation, such as annexation plat, have all the annexation agreement documents locked in. It would go out for referral. So we would kick it out to Montrose County. We would kick it out to all the entities that might have some specific involvement within, or with some property. And then, when it gets to the approval phase, it goes to Planning Commission. Now, annexation's a little unique, because the zoning piece just goes to Planning Commission. The annexation request doesn't. And that's what that one, that you see, there's a little footnote there. That's not shown in this. It's shown in the actual table. I'll note that. But they do not look at the actual annexation piece, just the initial zoning. That's what that footnote relates to. And then it's heard by city council as the final decision-making body. So again, this is, it looks a little confusing. Happy to sit down with any, any of the public, any developers who want to go over exactly, you know, how this looks. But this is pretty standard as far as modernization goes for codes. And this is going to be really a great component to our code moving forward, as I see it.
And the nice thing about that is that if you continue over onto that section reference, it actually refers you to the new section, which actually goes into great detail about exactly what the requirements are for that particular section.
It does. No, thank you for pointing that out. And we scrubbed to make sure those are the exact code sections, too. So I can tell you, we went through this with a fine-tooth comb and tried to catch every single thing we, we could and feel very confident in that. So here's another good example, a chart. We, we didn't have really any existing charts, or, again, I should say, we don't currently have really any existing charts within our code. And these just make life so much easier for, for a lot of people. What this one shows is the public notice requirements. You know, basically, a lot of things that come to you, or I should say, really, everything that comes to you has some sort of a noticing requirement. That's what's outlined here specifically. So nothing super noteworthy about the table itself, per se. But I did want to state that some of the additions we did include within this update or this consolidation process was, we did expand that mailed notice. It's currently 100 feet. That's pretty narrow. And it's, so we decided 300-foot area certainly seems better. That's actually pretty standard for a lot of jurisdictions that I've seen. So wanted to expand that and push that boundary a bit further. We've also added some, some additions. So email notification can be a supplemental option for notifications, and also combining Planning Commission and city council notifications. Thought that's a good idea. I think in the past, a lot of times, what we've seen is just the planning commission dates are actually what's noticed in some of the letters. And we can just include both, both within now. And that's what we'll, we'll start doing. And then, lastly, neighborhood meetings, just expanding those to all forms of development. Right now, it's only, I believe, for site developments and maybe subdivisions, as it's outlined in the code. We're just saying that any development, it would be probably beneficial to have a neighborhood meeting. We're not saying it's required, but it's certainly a good idea. And we would advise applicants, if we know that there's a controversial project, on holding a neighborhood meeting. Then this is the last chart I'll show. This is the use table. As planners, we kind of live and die by this table at the end of the day. This is what the bulk of calls that we receive are about. Basically, what it shows is all of the zoning districts. And this is just, keep in mind, the one you see here is just the residential. Within the code document itself, you'll see about probably eight to 10 pages of very similar-looking tables like this for both residential and commercial. But what it shows is all the zoning districts, and then what is allowed within those zoning districts, what's an accessory use, what's a conditional use. And then, if it's blank and there's a footnote, all uses not listed in the zone district are prohibited. So those blanks are there. We thought about putting an "in" there. It really kind of cluttered things, to be honest with you. So we felt that having that footnote cleared it up. And we have that actually in a couple of places. One thing I do want to point out is this chart is not eliminating uses or changing uses as things currently stand today. We carried everything over, again, just to put it in a very user-friendly form. Right now, if you look through our code, you're going to see, you're going to have to go to the specific zoning area or zoning district within the code. And then you're going to have to look at the narrative of the uses and basically go kind of zone by zone. It's just tedious, and this just simplifies things. So, you know, with phase 2 or phase 3 of the code update, we'll probably look to add more uses, because I'll admit, I think we're a little bit light on the uses, the total uses that we show here. But that's not something that we're doing with this, this today. And then, as far as next steps go, again, as I've mentioned, and we've, we've kind of pushed for the last several months, this is phase 1. This is the groundwork, as we see it, of a multi-phase approach. What we wanted to do was consolidate, and then it'll make red lines and future code updates and amendments a lot easier. We didn't want to jump into more controversial code updates with this specific project, because we know that there's a lot more involved with that. There's a lot of public outreach that goes into that. There's a lot more community meetings and a lot more council discussion that goes along with those. with those. So keeping that in mind, again, we, we saw this as really the groundwork and, and we'll have further, further phases probably within the, the next six months or so. And again, one thing you'll see in the packet is Exhibit One. That actually lists the substantive changes, really by, on a chapter-by-chapter basis. A lot of the things really aren't major. These are things that we covered in the work session and kind of covered ad nauseam a bit. But just want to pinpoint those. Those are available to the, the public as well, just to see exactly what we're doing and be fully transparent in this whole process. That being said, I don't have much more, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. I know, like I said, Martin is also on the line to answer any specific questions.
It's really fascinating. You guys did a great job. When you really start digging into it, you can see how you just took something that, things were all over the place, they'd been added on to, and you, you took all that information and you redid it in a much new, better organized way that'll help our, our constituents, the community, landowners, developers, council members understand. And I think it's really fantastic.
I also would like to thank our consultants and staff for an amazing job. I've gone through this and I can even find it. So it's, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. And it was, it was a lot of work and I give a lot of credit to, to staff and direction from council. You know, my, my predecessors that were in this position, you know, I have no ill will towards the old code or the writers of said code, but I'm really excited for this consolidation.
It's such a great base to work from, too, as we look at, you know, like you said, this is Phase One, but with the housing plan document that, you know, you presented last night, any changes we want to make as a community for how we look at zoning things, we now have a really nice framework to hang those changes on that'll make it much easier to understand if we do want to see changes and what that looks like. So I think it's making the whole process easier and more transparent.
That was, that was the goal and yeah, I appreciate the, the recognition on that specifically. And it's a, it's a good point. We have a housing needs assessment that's very close to completion and we plan to kind of factor some of those in with your guidance at the end of the day to see if those changes are appropriate for Phase Two. And, and so that's certainly something that we'll look at moving forward.
Any other questions from council on this? Okay, then I would go to public comment on this item. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak about our reorganization of our land use codes? Oh, fantastic. Come forward and state your name for the record and your address. We'll set up the timer on our screen here and we'd love to hear your comments on this item.
My name's Clay Goldberg. I live at 16500 6475 Road. Yes, it's in the city. And I, I think it's, it's commendable to put everything in one place because it's, it's something the building code did some years ago where they took all the residential and put it in one place and it was very helpful. But I certainly have not been able to figure out how I get notice of this thing. I've, I had never saw it. I get the notice from the city clerk about agendas and this is the first time I caught anything and it's a nice little thing that says, oh, we're going to adopt this. This is 250 pages, which is half this rema paper. So it's a, it's not a small thing that you're doing. And I'm just troubled by a few things. One is, is this expanded notice. I think that's a good thing, but I think that there needs to be a special expanded notice for these special review projects like the, what do they call it? Ambulatory Care Center? That was an example, or a Walmart or something like that. That affects a lot more people than just the people who live immediately within the area. I live near the acute or ambulatory care center and it's a good thousand feet from my house, but I certainly see it. It's 65 feet tall. And, and then I'm troubled by this where you remove submittal requirements and reference application, which is, which contains the submittal requirements. The, the, I, my background is in engineering, civil engineering in particular, and I know that the application requirements is a huge issue when you go to apply for something because if you don't know what you're doing, then you'll get there and you'll waste a lot of time because you don't have the right requirements. And now it seems that this is no longer in the ordinance. It's something that the staff can just put together. And I'm not sure what this non-conforming lot is. And I also noticed that maybe this isn't the appropriate place, but what defines as a hardship, I've, my experience with that is it's whatever you decide it, it is. It doesn't seem to be very well-defined. And I, I hope that there would be more time to consider 250 pages of material because I just found, I just got it today at four o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think you were in the room when I suggested to other folks who were making public comment that if you couldn't put your contact information on the sign-in sheet when you leave, that way if staff have more information they want to share with you, they know how to reach you. So that's on the table right outside the doors. Any other public comment for tonight on this item? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to pass ordinance 2626 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, great. We have a first and a second. Please go ahead and vote electronically. Next is Item 13, The Bridges at Black Canyon. This is amended preliminary plat. And I will turn it over to Planner Two, William Reese, to talk about this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a brief presentation to share. If I can get this to work.
Clay, it's outside the doors on the table if you want the sign-in sheet. Sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council and members of the public. This is an amended preliminary plat application located within the Bridges at Black Canyon subdivision and planned development. The plat proposes 26 single-family residential lots located within the R2 low-density district and R3 medium-density district. The area is outlined in red on this map here and all lots are, all within the western portions that you see. The large eastern portion is reserved as an outlaw for future development. The property is located adjacent to R2, R3, and R3A medium-high-density district. Also, just one note, the application does not amend or modify the planned development that exists within the bridges. As you probably know, The Bridges has appeared before city council before for previous filings. Previous preliminary plats and amended preliminary plats are valid for five years before an applicant needs to resubmit a plat, named an amended preliminary plat even if there are no to little changes. With this plat, there is very little change to what has been previously approved, but the plans do have some minor updates to meet newer city standards and address stormwater protection. These are our subdivision review standards as set forth in Section 475 of the current municipal code. Of course, these were also reviewed during previous filings of The Bridges subdivision. We do review for conformance with the master plan and zoning regulations as well as items like the relationship to topography, soils, drainage, et cetera, utility availability, compatibility with the surrounding environment and vegetation, adjacent streets and traffic flow, availability of emergency services protection, and impacts on area schools. According to the future land use map of our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density low and residential mixed density medium. These land use designations suggest that the area is appropriate for a pretty wide variety of housing types and densities, ranging from single-family homes to triplexes or even rows of townhomes. Obviously, a single-family residential development, as being proposed here, does fall within this designation. Ultimately, it is our zoning regulations that determine appropriate densities and land uses. As previously stated, this area is located within R2, which provides for a quiet low-density development for single-family residences, and R3, which provides an area suitable for single-family homes or duplexes. And then here is the first page of the plat itself, which mainly consists of the standard plat notes as appropriate, as well as the signature lines. One minor thing to note here, this did undergo the review, staff review, and planning commission hearings during the tenure of Mayor Frank and thus the signature line does still have his name. I have requested the applicant change that to Mayor Bynum before they print the Mylars. And then here is the second page showing the actual lot dimensions as well as the plans for the road connections. Like I said, very little change to what had been previously approved through former filings. The plan does call for two cul-de-sacs where the lots are accessed, as well as a stub for future development to the east. In conclusion, staff finds that the amended preliminary plat is in compliance with subdivision regulations in the comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent of the zoning district and staff recommends the conditional approval of Bridges at Black Canyon amended preliminary plat with the standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plats. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve The Bridges at Black Canyon amended preliminary plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinance, and municipal code provisions are met and that the applicant adequately addresses all the staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. City staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Thank you. Please vote electronically when you see it and remember to hit save even if you, it's off the bottom of your screen. You might have to scroll down to see the save.
It would be possible to lower this curtain behind us?
I think that one's broken. Or maybe, oh, look at that!
Yeah, it is shining right on that screen. I can't see a darn thing.
Fantastic! And now I can see that that has passed unanimously. That's so much better. Okay, going on to Item 14. This is the Block 93 Sewer Replacement Construction Contract. This is council consideration of an award of a construction contract with Skip Houston Construction in the amount of $468,104.82 for completion of the Block 93 Sewer Replacement Project. And I will turn this over to City Engineer Scott Murphy for more information.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So no changes since work session, but since this is the first at a public council meeting, I will do a quick recap of the project. So Block 93, the original town plat has, refers to the blocks by number. So Block 93 is a fancy name for the block immediately behind Main Street on the northern side of Main Street, east of Townsend. There's a sewer line, this portion of town, all the sewer lines are typically located within the alleys, water lines are in the streets. And so in this case, original sewer line running back down through the middle of the alley has essentially reached the end of its useful life, is experiencing areas of pipe loss and collapse and is in need of replacement. So this project will replace, it'll use trenchless technology. It's, it's relatively deep at the eastern end. When excavating next to historic buildings, it's generally best to try and not excavate large hole or open up large excavations whenever necessary. So we will, fortunately, it's in good enough condition that we're able to use the trenchless technology, that we will drill down into the old pipe, follow it as kind of the guiding pilot hole and then ream back and pull a new pipe in its place. And then the excavations are only small ones as needed to reconnect the services. So that kind of covers the east-west portion of the pipe shown here. And then there will be some open cut work to replace a lateral here. This is within the city's parking lot, just north of the block. This is a public parking lot here, so we have room to excavate without getting too close to any of the buildings here, so that'll be a full replacement there. And then this portion can be lined. It's in enough, good enough condition that we can do a, under a separate contract, they do the, you know, kind of the sock hardened, hardened liners. But in order to that, we need to insert a couple manholes here. So there's, be a couple limited excavations here to insert some manholes and repair some of the pavement there. This is the AutoZone parking lot. It's actually an alley right in front of AutoZone, but technically, but it's more or less part of their parking lot. So the product was designed in-house by the city engineering department, went out to bid, we received four bids, three bids. Skip Houston Construction, pretty tight spread, relatively speaking. The low bidder was Skip Houston Construction at $468. That's the contract amount we're recommending here. This one, because it's designed in-house by the city, doesn't have any stakeout or any other support contracts. This will be fully managed by the engineering department. That's generally the case for projects about under a million. We generally will handle in-house and then over a million, we'll use the designers for survey stakeouts just because we don't have the capability to ramp up to those with all the other construction going on. The work itself will take place, you know, primarily within those footprints shown on the, on the map there on the second page. The, this parking lot here will, the western half of that will remain open and the contractor, it's written in their contract to accommodate the, you know, the parking that will occur there. And then we also, they also need to accommodate trash pickup and deliveries. So businesses there, they can, if they work with their delivery drivers, just let them know that it'd be business as usual. Depending on where they're working, if a portion's blocked, they may have to go around. But in one way or another, they will maintain access for those kind of day-to-day functions. Once they start the work, they have, I believe it's 60 calendar days to complete. And so with how busy everyone is, we're kind of giving contractors windows. And so, you know, we'll give them a big six or seven-month window and then within that window, they can, they have 60 days. Once they start, they have to get it completed within 60 days and reopened. There'll be some cleanup work outside of that allowable window, but that allows them to fit in with all the other projects going on because you don't want to drive kind of an unnecessary schedule and drive the price way up for no reason. You know, if we get it done this summer, we're, we're going to be fine, so. The original scope and budget was $250,000. That was before we got in and did a lot of the investigation work and saw just how poor the condition was. So the scope of the project creeped and since budget time, as we've seen on almost all projects this year, generally materials, labor, every, all of the above on construction contracts are going up. And so the overage is a product of those two things primarily. Fortunately, we did have $200,000 budgeted within the sewer capital fund for moving Montrose forward sewer repairs. The way those work is when we are scoping and working on our, all of our major street repairs for the year, we want to make sure that we've, if we have waterline work or sewer line work to do under those streets, that we're doing those, if the conditions necess, if the conditions are poor enough that it warrants major work, we want to do that work concurrent with the road repair so that we don't come in and dig up a road after it's been newly paved. Fortunately, in this case, at, so at budget time, you know, a lot of those scopes are kind of unknown until we get into the design. Fortunately, as we got into the cambering and design on all of those streets for Move Mo this year, all the sewers underneath them were in good condition and so we didn't have to use that $200,000. So that just stays within the sewer capital fund, sewer capital enterprise fund as available to kind of shift around between other projects. So although this project is over, we do have $200,000 that another project was under. They were kind of lumping together to make this one happen. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on this project? Doesn't look like there are any. So is there any public comment on sewer line replacements in the alley? It's exciting stuff.
Exciting stuff.
Okay, I don't see any, so I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the construction contract with Skip Houston Construction in the amount of $468,104.82 for the completion of the Block 93 Sewer Replacement.
Second. We have a first and a second. I have one more quick question, actually, Scott. Once they decide when, what 60 days works best for them, how do you let the public and especially those businesses know when it's going to happen?
So once, kind of this, in areas this tight, we would do direct mailers and door hangers. Sometimes the tenants don't match the owner, so a lot of times we'll just go through and mail them both to the tenant and to the owner so that everyone's aware. For anything adjacent to its Anderson Road, it's a good example, we just did a mailing to every adjacent business. And then we'll also do press releases. Usually we try and get those out about a week ahead of the closure. And then talking to obviously our trash departments and then the delivery drivers, we kind of just have to catch them once word starts spreading.
So once Skip Houston Construction decides which 60 days during the next five months work best for them, how much notice do we usually get on a, like when they want to start?
Um, usually about a month.
Okay.
Marty's here, he's their owner. They're, they're one of the better ones as far as, actually probably some of the best as far as communication and planning their entire summer out. So we know pretty far in advance.
Okay.
Is it possible then to let the affected residents know sooner than a week out?
Certainly. Yeah, yeah. No, I think we can pass that along as soon as we get it, as soon as we have a start date and that, yeah, could easily be three to four weeks. That'd be no problem.
Great, thank you. Sorry that my question came a little late.
No problem. No problem.
We have a first and a second, and so please vote. And that passes unanimously, moving us on to item 615, which is the Street Light Upgrade Project and the DMEA Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU. And this is counsel consideration of the authorization of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Montrose and Delta Montrose Electric Association for a street light upgrade project in the amount of $110,000. And I will turn it over to Public Works Director Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. So yeah, there's been no changes since we discussed at work session, but I'll give a brief overview of the project again. So this would be the first, first of potentially four years with the goal of replacing all of our existing old-style streetlights to an LED fixture. So the old style are murkier vapor or high-pressure sodium, and we have about 1,900 streetlights total. About 500 of those have already been replaced to an LED, but this project is, within four years, having the goal of replacing the rest of them to where all of our streetlights would be an LED. That, we would accomplish about 350 to 400 of those per year, depending on budget. With $110,000 that was budgeted this year, we would be able to achieve between 350 and 400 lights this year. Just to clarify, this does not include some more decorative lights downtown. So our pedestrian-level lights that we have in the downtown area are a city-owned light and not a DMEA light. So this project is not geared towards those lights. Several reasons for this project in the first place, financial being probably the easiest one, that the return on investment is 2.3 years for us to purchase these fixtures, have them installed. The lower amount of energy they use and that we pay for is a return on investment of about 2.3 years. After the four years of the project, or once all of the lights are changed to an LED, this would result in about $200,000 per year less in energy costs to the city. And of course, the lights are just energy efficient. They are able to produce the same amount of light with a much lower amount of energy, so they're just efficient. It also aligns with several dark sky principles, which include things like useful lights, lights having a purpose, all lights are shielded, and using the proper color and light levels that are appropriate for that street type. Which also brings me to the street organization, and that's organizing our streets by light type. So certain minor trails and major trails would be lit differently than residential roads, helping to organize our street network. This also does align with and achieve goals in our comprehensive plan, mostly aligned with energy and water conservation. And so with this, what we are authorizing is an MOU with DMEA in which DMEA is agreeing to install the light fixtures for us, up to $110,000 worth of light fixtures in 2023, and inventorying the necessary fixtures to align with our street lighting plan. And the city, of course, is agreeing to pay for those light fixtures to be exchanged rather than waiting for those old-style lights to go out on their own. Once those lights could have burned out over the next 20 years, the lights would have been replaced by DMEA at their cost, but we're agreeing to pay for those upfront. Again, because of the return on investment, that makes sense where the lights could have lasted 20 years, our return will be received much sooner than that. And again, we did budget for this in 2023, we've budgeted $110,000 for this project, and we intend to include similar amounts in our budgets in the future years to accomplish this project hopefully in four years. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions there may be.
Can you just remind the public, if this is such a great return on investment, why aren't we doing all 1,400 lights right now?
Well, that's a great question. So one is budget capacity, you know, being on the budget of, that would be $440,000 in one year, so budget capacity is one reason. But also working with DMEA on their ability to exchange these light fixtures and even be able to obtain this many fixtures. So supply issues are one that we're working through with DMEA and also their crew availability and their size, capacity to be able to change out the fixtures. So that's why we are targeting four years.
Are the rest of you driving around town, looking up, figuring out which ones are old and new, and once you recognize it, it's really easy to tell? Yeah, I know I have been, yeah. Any questions? Any public comment on changing, changing out some lights in our MOU with DMEA? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize a memorandum of understanding between the City of Montrose and Delta Montrose Electric Association for a street light upgrade project in the amount of $110,000.
We have a first and a second. Please vote electronically.
Madam Mayor, may I make a suggestion to you?
Absolutely.
After you have your motion and second, we may call for debate or discussion amongst the council members before calling for a vote.
Okay.
It's not a requirement, but it would make it more possible somewhere. Like earlier, Ed was trying to speak, but you called for the vote because you didn't know.
Right, okay.
Just a thought.
Good idea. That passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to number 16. Montrose Public Safety Complex Solar Panels Add Alternate Award. This is counsel consideration of a contract with Elastisolar for the installation of a solar panel system at the Montrose Public Safety Complex in the amount of $205,506. And I will turn this back over to Public Works Director Jim Scheid for more information.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. So there's been no changes to this either since we spoke at work session, but a brief overview is that this, the solar panels relate to a couple other aspects of the project, which I'll give an update on. So the covered parking structures is what the solar panels will be mounted to or would be mounted to, and those are being repaired right now. So as part of the reason why we waited until now to pursue the solar panel option was because of the covered parking structures and their repairs. They're being repaired and replaced likely in the month of June. We're being notified by our contractor that they should mobilize at the end of May and have the structures repaired in the month of June. And these repairs were part of the original construction project and are coming at no cost to the city. And then also this being completed allows us to truly see what is remaining in the funding pot for the project and to be able to consider an alternate like this. So speaking of the overall funding for the project, there is about $350,000 remaining in the owner's contingency of the project, and that again is why we're discussing the add alternate of solar panels now. So solar panels were an alternate throughout the project from the very beginning, which was not accepted early on. There was a lot of unknowns in the project, definitely a lot of unforeseen conditions, and solar panels are an easy add at the end because there's, we can add them with no additional cost. So the infrastructure for them was previously installed and we can do it now without having to remove anything else. There were several other add alternates accepted throughout the project, but this one was preserved for the end to make sure we would be able to include it in our budget. So we would be including solar panels on all four of the covered parking canopies, which would equal a system of 64 kilowatts. This would supplement the energy used at the facility and would be installed after the meter. What that would do on a sunny day is it would replace about 25% of the energy used by the facility on a normal operating day. And that also leads us to a return on investment, which would be about 12 to 15 years, we would see a return for this investment on the solar system. This also does align with our comprehensive plan and goals that was mentioned with the streetlights and also in the energy and water conservation. If we were to move forward this, this would leave about $150,000 of unspent in the owner's contingency of the project, which would remain in the public safety fund to be used for future public safety projects. This portion of the project was included in the overall authorized amount, but was not specifically budgeted for in 2023. So it's unbudgeted, but it does have dedicated funding and available funding for it. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One thing I wanted to point out is with the advancement in the technology of solar, that this isn't your grandpa's solar panel. These are much more efficient, much more modern. The size is smaller for the efficiency of them. So I just think this is a fantastic program and I'm really pretty excited about it.
Okay, is there any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the contract with Elastisolar for the installation of the solar panel system at the Montrose Public Safety Complex in the amount of $205,506.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to item 17, a sanitary sewer rate study. This is counsel consideration of a contract with Corolla Engineers to perform a sanitary sewer cost of service analysis for the not to exceed amount of $70,000. And I'll ask Utilities Manager David Rees to tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight is consideration of a contract with Corolla Engineering to do a water, or a sewer rate study that looks at all where our cost components on our wastewater treatment facilities are. We haven't really done a rate study, I think, since 2003, so it's about 20 years ago, and it's time to really look at our rate structures and modernize those rate structures to what are typical, what currently are spread in order to fairly assess those costs on the different types of customers. Restaurants have significantly different loading requirements than residential customers, and this is really looking at where those cost centers are at the wastewater treatment plant and the collection system, and then coming up with a way to allocate those costs to where we could easily apply those costs onto those customers. We didn't, on this specific project, we didn't go out for RFP, we didn't solicit quotes on it. We, and partially because we have a really good relationship with Corolla Engineering, they've done our nutrient removal optimization at the wastewater treatment plant, so they have a really good understanding of where those cost centers are, where those costs apply, as well as we recently hired them and they're working on the storm sewer rate analysis or cost for developing a storm sewer rate study. So we've got a really good relationship with them and felt that they really have an understanding of what our objectives are and what, you know, what our needs are. And they come back with a very, very good cost from our estimation. We've actually budgeted significantly more than what their estimated cost was, and I think a lot of that is primarily due to their detailed understanding of our system, not having to relearn and redevelop a lot of that information. So what we're recommending is that we agree to a cost, or a study not to exceed $70,000 to perform this rate study, and that would give us about $10,000 in owner's contingency that if we, as they're going down and want more details or want, have some things that we want them to flesh out a little bit more than what they included in their estimate that we can have it. But it would be hourly not to exceed $70,000.
Thank you. Questions from council on the rate study?
I, I'd...
Oh, we got a couple, okay.
When would you expect to have the results of this study?
I believe their schedule was to have them by late summer, so they would get started on it right away and have something in order to implement those rates for next year.
Thank you.
Dave, are there other engineering firms in our local area that would be able to do this? I mean, that are, that we have worked with in the past? Normally, we try to send out an RFP on a lot of these kind of projects, but the value of having somebody that's already embedded in our system makes a lot of sense to me, but I want the public to understand a little deeper why we would choose to not send out an RFP.
Yeah, yeah, these type of rate analysis are typically not done by the local engineering firms that deal with developers and those type. They're more of your national engineering firms that deal with, you know, rates across the country. And I think that's really the value that Corolla brings is they've got experience, you know, from numerous other municipalities across Colorado specifically, as well as those across the country.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add a little bit of context to it, Bill. You can correct me or add additional information, but our sewer fund is an enterprise fund, which means it's standalone, and by state law, we can't put money from the general fund into that. We have to charge our sewer users for that service. And so I think when you see us spending money on a lot of stuff, but then talking about a rate study on sewer, I think that's important for the public to understand that we have to collect from the users of the sewer system what it costs to operate the sewer system, and we can't supplement that with general fund dollars.
It actually operates as a business.
It is like a business, yeah. Is that, any additional or any corrections to that?
The only thing I would say is not necessarily state law, but government accounting standards, GASB requirements and the GFPA requirements.
Thank you. That's the kind of correction I was looking for, perfect.
Okay. No additional questions or comments from council, so I would accept public comment. Yes, please come forward again. And again, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Donald Cramm. I live at 14461 Marine Road. And I'm not familiar with the details of this at all, but I just have a general, would have a general understanding that if rates are being redone, that say the charges going to restaurants might increase relative to others. And I just wonder whether there's any provision for, like, what about restaurants which are making a big effort to dispose of less and to use composting or other uses for their, what would have gone into the sewer system? Would there be any provisions for like a program that if they were sort of certified or something like that, to be using the sewers less? Could that be encouraged?
That's a great question, Donald, and I think that we'll have staff get back to you if there's an easy answer, but I'm guessing the general answer is that's why we hire a consultant for stuff like this, because they're going to have that kind of information and they're going to tell us as a city how to implement that.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely the case. And that's, the whole concept of the rate study is develop a dynamic system that's easy to implement, but also provides provisions for those exceptions to where we're not charging somebody for something that they're not being, they're not utilizing.
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Corolla Engineers to perform a sanitary sewer cost of service analysis for the not to exceed amount of $70,000.
We have a first and a second. If anyone has any discussion or comments, please vote. Oh, we're going to make it through the meeting so well, we're on the last one. Okay, oh, there it was, real quickly, we have unanimous vote on that and it is passed. Thank you very much. That will allow us to move on to staff reports. Is there any staff member who has some...
member who has something to talk about? Okay, I don't see any. We are not joined by a youth counselor tonight. If we are, I apologize. I totally don't see anyone. Okay, good. And then city council comments? You guys are really quiet. I have a couple of things. It feels like it's the start of summer today. The weather is really good. There's so many events going on, and the city tries to do our best to put those on a city event calendar. Some of the events are city events, like the Fourth of July. I'm looking forward to that. But we put anyone's events on there. So like, the Montrose Summer Music Series is not a city event, but you'll find that on the calendar. And anyone who wants to get an event on that calendar can reach out to our Office of Business and Tourism, and we'll get that event on that calendar for you. Yeah, you want to talk about that?
I just wanted to mention, we are still in the mayor's water challenge through the end of April, and this is an opportunity for us to really also show our...
It's May.
May? Oh, there was April.
Well, we're in May.
No, we went through the end of April.
Oh, okay. So we're still waiting for results.
So we're still waiting for results to find out where we were, how well we did.
Hopefully not.
I'm gonna have to, like, say no, but no. But it was a great opportunity, just to, we're talking a lot about how our comprehensive plan talks about saving water, power, and helping our citizens out. So it was a great opportunity for people to kind of show up. And as soon as we find out more about that, we hopefully will be able to give you guys some updates on that.
Great.
I want you to know that my grass is a little brown. I started to pull it off.
That's a good thing.
And I've been visiting the neighbors and telling them that it's kind of early to start watering because of all the rain again. So maybe that, maybe welcome.
Might also mention, for public consumption, that tomorrow morning at the forum, there will be a presentation on the housing needs assessment that the city is currently conducting, which is almost complete. And we were fortunate enough to listen to a presentation last night. So I think all those who could attend would find that to be very interesting.
Okay. Think of anything else we want to make sure people know about?
Okay. Then, per our agenda, we are not going to adjourn. We are going to have an executive session, which will entail just council, and I believe our attorneys and our city managers. And you have some language for me to read about that. But meanwhile, I think everyone else can excuse themselves. I'd like to thank the public that came to our meeting tonight. We appreciate it. And like to see you here. Thank you. Yeah, we can take a five-minute break, so we can, sure. And then we'll go into an executive session under our standard protocol of calling for that and reading some legal language. If you want to see us read into executive session, that part is public, if you're curious how that works. But then, then we do just have us here.
Yeah.
It's a Friday.
I was happy to do it.
It's a great idea.
I was happy to do it. I really, that was a great presentation.
It really was. That's what I need so much.
Looks like they're trying to add some of the provisions back in.
But I feel like I have a valid experience, but that only gets me a phone call.
Yeah, I moved in Thursday morning. If we're going to be far from here, I'll be available by phone. I am out of town on Thursday and Friday.
I'm aware. Best bills, it's covered on. The lawsuits, the amount of that, it's just going to be...
You should ask him. I totally did. I was going to text you about it. I know where that came from. It doesn't have to be on it. It went around the outlet. I'm pretty sure that it used to belong to Dick France, the guy that owned Westmore. Watch out. He's making, sorry. It doesn't have a top on it. It always did. So if I'm right, it's got a spring over it. And the opinions have never set, and they never adjusted. So it's scary. I talked with him about it one day. He's like, I didn't necessarily put, I never rested anything to have them write. I forget what it's ever had. You have to, like, cut the wheels, twist the tube up so that the opinion is, you know what I mean? Or else you're like, oh, look. So he said, I think that's the one, just like it. Well, it looks nice. Oh, it's freaking awesome. I would love to write that. But it's a shame to see it with a top on it. It looks like it's a good thing. I'm going to go buy it and tell them they're going to buy it. Oh, sure.
Technically, our meeting doesn't end until we come back. That would be pretty boring. I mean, it could be pretty boring. I mean, it's going to come back. We're not going to go on anything. We cannot executive session, so I would say... It's just recording. I don't think we're going to... We're going to try and wrap this up, because we are still recording this as a meeting. And so we want to get into executive session. Thank you again for those members of the public who are here tonight, and staff. I'm going to start signing everything in purple, if attorney signs everything in green. No. I mean, I'd like it to read us into executive session, but if you're asking if you can just go. I'd like to record us going into executive session, because we're going to cross our Ts and we're going to dot our Is. And I'd like, okay, but for the public, I don't want them to have to...
Well, it's still an open session.
Okay. Okay. Well, they can be returned on for now, I think, as we go into this, because we're going to do it all correctly. And I am going to ask my mayor pro tem to make the motion to go into executive session.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to CRS Section 2464024B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Discussion and advice ray a pending real estate transaction.
Okay, we have a motion. And we have a second. And I believe we're just going to do a, like, we're going to vote out loud. We're going to call it. All those in favor of going into executive session, say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, so...
Who's our second? Who made the motion? I'm sorry. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to say...
Okay, so I'd like to say...